The Council for recognizing Mrs. DeMello, who lived down the street from my family for many years. In fact, I did offer to bring her here tonight, but she declined. In any event, but I appreciate recognizing her. I'd like to ask one question and then basically depending on that, the answer, then I'd like to make a comment. And that is, to the Council's knowledge or the staff's knowledge, is there any thought of bringing before the Council the concept of regulating 5G installations? Is anyone able to answer that question?
Would you like me to do that? The city actually has in place quite a bit of regulation for telecommunications equipment, and quite a bit of it applies to the issue that people are labeling 5G. What staff's doing now with the city attorney's office is reviewing what some of the other cities are doing to update their codes to further regulate this specific technology. So my assurance to the public is they're not going to just start appearing tomorrow in Larkspur without the city being aware and engaged in some sort of review process. But we think we could probably update our code a bit, and we'll be looking at doing that and bringing it to you. And I think we probably will report out in a fairly near future meeting on that.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I appreciate that because as you're probably aware, at least four cities have instituted controls. And I would certainly like to ensure that Larkspur has the same, and Larkspur residents have the same level of control and protection that the other cities have. And it would seem that there would not necessarily be a great deal of staff involvement, other than just making the photocopies from the other, from the other cities. So I do urge that it be brought up sooner rather than later. So again, that we may have the same level of protection that the folks in Mill Valley and Ross and the others, Fairfax.
Great. Thanks, James. I apologize. Our mayor at the moment is caught in traffic, so he'll be here sooner than later, I hope. All right, we'll move on. Move on to the presentations, which are always my favorite. 3.1 proclamation of the Larkspur City Council recognizing Amelia DeMello and her contribution to the Larkspur Library. I see that Amelia's not here, but I see she has a fan club. Would anyone like to come up and say something about Amelia before I read her proclamation? Look at those beautiful flowers.
Barbara Friday from in Larkspur. And it's nice to see everyone. And I'm so sorry Amelia's not here because she's been so influential and helpful for the library and all of us. At our Friends of the Library meeting today, Janice said that in, over her 34 years of volunteer service, she must have touched every book in the library, either preparing it for circulation or whatever she has done. So I would have liked to have presented these to every person, but we'll make sure that she gets it tomorrow. And the Friends would just like to say a very sincere and heartfelt thank you to Amelia for all her contributions over these many years.
Well, I hope Amelia's watching because Amelia, we have some lovely words to say about you. Amelia is especially few people on this planet serve their community as a volunteer as Amelia DeMello has done. Amelia, a California native, was born in San Francisco in 1927. She attended Lowell High School and University of California Berkeley and met her husband, Al DeMello, through a stamp collection club. Love that. Amelia and Al moved from the city to Tamalpais Drive in Cordera Madera in 1955, where they raised five children, where Amelia continues to live. Amelia's mother purchased a home in Madrone Canyon in the late 50s, and Amelia has spent her years involved in the Twin Cities in a variety of roles, including daughter, homemaker, scout leader, secretary of the stamp club, and library volunteer. Amelia has volunteered 24 years at the Larkspur Library, where she helps get books ready for circulation by covering, labeling, and stamping each one. Thank you, Amelia. And Amelia, who celebrated, are you ready for this, 91, 91 years in September 2018, continues to serve as a dedicated volunteer, coming to the library several mornings each week, where she has given an estimated 10,000 hours to the Larkspur Library. Amelia, we want to thank you. The Council wants to thank you. The City of Larkspur wants to thank you for all your service in improving our city and all the service you've given to as a volunteer. Thank you very much. I see our mayor has returned. Hello, Dan. I'll let you go ahead.
Please continue.
Okay. I will sign this. I will sign this in a moment and hand it to you. We now have Karen, Karen Strolla. Strollia?
Strollia.
Strollia. She is the director and does an incredible job of the Downtown Streets Team in Marin County. So what she has to share you is pretty exciting information. So Karen, thanks for taking time out to be here.
Thank you.
And giving us the update.
Yeah, no, I'm excited to be here.
Look forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
You're on.
Um, we're here? This is where?
It's coming.
Okay. Hopefully I won't cast a shadow. So as Councilmember Morrison said, my name is Karen Strollia. I'm the Director of Downtown Streets Team here in Marin County. And I'm going to start with what is Downtown Streets Team. We like to call it DST for short. It is a nonprofit organization, and what we do is we help homeless individuals get back on their feet and into employment and housing. It's a volunteer work experience program where they spend their mornings sweeping the streets, working on community projects. The purpose is a daily meaningful activity. A lot of times, folks are isolated in their encampments, and we provide a way to get reconnected and practice resume building, overcome any barriers through case management. We've got attorneys that volunteer pro bono to work on any legal barriers. We have therapists that work on trauma. And we've had several successes in Marin County between getting folks housed and employed. We've seen 112 folks get off the streets. So it's been a pretty impactful opportunity to be here in the county. We've got two teams, one in San Rafael, one in Novato. And it was through the lens of the employment platform that Marin Mobile Care really came to life. We had a lot of folks who would secure the opportunity to interview, and they would come to us with, you know, loss of self-esteem. They didn't feel dignified. They were wearing the same clothes for a month, and they weren't sure how to approach that. While Ritter Center is the brick-and-mortar establishment available in the county for folks, their window of use is limited, and the number of folks they can serve was limited. So kind of a two-pronged situation here. We started by doing outreach. When we went to the county with this idea of offering mobile showers, we, you know, the county came to us and said, well, we need numbers. We need to know what the data looks like. So we did outreach. We came to, we went as far north as the north of Novato. We went to West Marin. We went to Sausalito. We went to everywhere in between to really get an idea of how people were being served, if they had access or could get to the showers that were available. If they couldn't, what were their means of being able to bathe? So we got responses like, I'm bathing in the bay, I'm bathing with garden hoses, I'm bird bathing, as they say, in public restrooms, libraries, businesses, et cetera, which none of those options are really a dignified way to take a shower. So, so we pursued it. Like I mentioned, there was one, only one available service in Ritter. And so if you are, imagine you're staying in Sausalito, and you've got limited resources anyway, getting to Ritter and San Rafael sometimes poses a challenge in and of itself. So it really isolates the opportunity to bathing in the bay or those other examples that I heard out there. The biggest piece of this was really trying to figure out how we could meet people where they were. So, and you know, mobile showers are mobile, so we really can go where people are. So fast-forwarding, we were able to purchase the units. We've got two units. They're, they each have three restrooms. One of those three is California ADA compliant, so we can serve folks with disabilities or families. Ritter is not allowed to serve families or anyone under the age of 18, so this is really open to that bandwidth a little bit. Those units were purchased through the donation from Marin Community Foundation, MCF. And then we were able to actually have the first year of operation through Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members, MCCMC is the acronym there, which has been incredible. So a part of you guys have contributed to that larger pool, and we appreciate your support in that, in that aspect. So as I mentioned, Downtown Streets Team, we're working with folks who are trying to get back into employment. This has been an opportunity for us to hire directly. So we have been able to hire our team members, and those are the folks who are running the showers now. They've been incredible, incredible partners for me in making this happen. We quickly got them CPR trained. We got them first aid trained. And of course, we had to get them trained in conflict management because people who are struggling and in survival mode are on the edge and can be short-fused. So how do we work with that? We launched our showers in early March, so really the end of February, but that first week I don't count because it was filled with chaos and adventure. So the first shower was served at the beginning of March. We had three sites to start. We had two in Novato, one in San Rafael. One of those sites didn't work in the sense that we were able to serve, but it was not convenient for anyone in that, in that part of the community. So we put that site on hold while we still have access to it. We haven't had a need for that use. So we've got the two sites. We've got San, one in San Rafael, which is at the community clinics off of Kerner at the Health and Wellness Campus. We host showers in the morning, early from six to nine, two days a week, and we host showers in the evening, six to nine, two days a week. The second site is in Novato at our Downtown Streets Team office, which is on the same plot of land as Homeward Bound, which a lot of you probably are familiar with. When our, when our staff is not hosting showers, they're conducting outreach, and they don't limit that outreach to just the two communities that we're hosting in. So these guys are going to Sausalito. They're coming to the marsh, you know, between the Twin, the Twin Cities here. They're hitting San Rafael. They're going to West Marin. They're really trying to still keep a pulse on where that need is. And that's where, why I'm here today is to, there's a need here, and we'd like to be able to serve showers here. And of course, you can see the objectives. The biggest piece of our showers is that we are able to get folks connected to coordinated entry, which is the Housing First Initiative. When folks come to the showers, we conduct the surveys. We get them into the system. We've already seen successes from this, so the system works, and the shower is a great entry point for, for that reason. It's a basic need. I like to think of this as go camping for five days, come home, and just try not to take a shower. That's the first thing I do when I come back from Samuel P. So to be able to offer that convenience to folks who are not able to have that privilege is really important. And like I said, we reach, we're meeting people where they are. Moving forward, I know I love data, so I'm going to share my nerdness with you guys. This is a snapshot of what October looked like. And just to give you an idea of what's going on in this picture, column two, well, column one is the available number of showers each day and each month. So that's the max capacity we can offer based on time. Keep in mind, there's a water capacity as well, and I can talk, I'll touch on that later. Column two is the average daily for October. Column three is the number of unique individuals that we served at each site and the unique number of individuals per month. So really, I look at those first three columns as capacity utilization. And what that really is showing us is that we're not at full capacity. We're about 50% capacity. So that means two things. It means that there's room for growth. We can still access, we can still reach and through outreach, get people to come to the showers. It also means that there's not a huge opportunity for folks to be hanging out in large groups at the showers. We haven't seen an issue with that, which comes up a lot when I'm speaking with, with folks about the, this program. The other columns here, the percentages, those are really the snapshot of how people are getting, how many people are getting connected to the greater system. So the coordinated entry through the VI Spitat, the vulnerability index that we're using. And what you'll notice is that there is a huge influx of folks who are actually being served outside of San Rafael, which is, which has historically been the hub. Everybody calls it the hub. I'd like to also note that the first three months that we were hosting showers, we were touching folks that weren't already connected to services at all. So these were folks who were staying in their cars, didn't know there was, there were services that existed. They had never accessed Ritter, Vinnie's, any of those things until they started touching showers. And now they're getting plugged into medical care, dental care, all of these other resources that have been at their fingertips, they just didn't know existed. So here are the three Cs that, you know, elephant in the room, let's get them out of the way. The conflicts, the challenges, what is it really like? Boots on the ground. The biggest challenges we've seen really have been trust-building. It takes folks a minute to really want to build the trust with, with people that they don't know. We're asking them through coordinated entry to fill out these surveys that ask vulnerable information. I don't know about you guys, but I don't necessarily want to give my social security number upon my first encounter with somebody I don't know. So that's where we've seen what a lot of us have historically looked at as loitering, as an opportunity for our staff to connect with these, with folks, with our guests that are coming to the showers. It gives our staff a chance to build that trust and get connected to services. We get a lot of questions about, you know, is this establishing a homeless population where there may not previously be? No, it's meeting people where they are. We haven't had any crossover. We haven't had somebody from Novato coming to San Rafael or vice versa. We haven't seen anybody from Sausalito coming to Novato or San Rafael for showers. So that's another, another key piece. There was one verbal altercation between two guests, and our staff immediately was helped, was able to mediate that. Those two folks now are still actually allies out there. They have both connected to services, but while they're working to get back into housing and working on their employment goals, they've become friends, which has been really powerful to see. We also have had someone who tried to use a substance in the shower, and while, you know, we don't, it's a no-barrier program. You can come how you are. We're really there to offer the basic need and get people connected. We don't, we don't have a tolerance for folks who are actively using onsite. So our team talked to the person, and the person left and came back the next visit and didn't bring their substance, but still took a shower, connected with our staff, and asked about sobriety. So the dialogue shifted a little bit for that person. And I'd like to point out that despite the conflicts that we've seen, we haven't had the need to call any of our police friends. We have lots of them everywhere, and we've, our staff has been well-equipped to handle any conflicts or challenges. With challenges comes successes, and this is my favorite part, of course, is what we like to see. So we were, we were able to reunite one person with their family, and that sounds small. This one person was found under a bush, and his neighbor, quote unquote neighbor, put him in his car and said, brought him over to the showers and said, I heard about you guys through the radio, through, you know, on, on the radio, and is this where I bring, bring my neighbor? Absolutely, let's get him in. We peel seven layers of soaking wet clothes off of his body. He was so fragile, he had to be carried to the stall. When we get to the, to his skin, we realize it's not there because he's been sitting in his wet clothes for months. We get him bathed, we get him redress, redressed through donations, and this guy takes him to Marin General. He was admitted. He had external stuff, he had internal stuff that needed to be taken care of and nurtured. But while he was there at Marin General, the doctors were able to connect to this family. So that was a huge success on our end. He went from a bush to a family. So that was pretty cool. It's one success, but it's pretty juicy. We've seen several people get connected through Ritter. Not just connected, but consistently going back to maintain their service and their healthcare needs, whether that's mental health medication, physical, physical wounds being treated, whatever the case may be. There's a commitment there because they're not ashamed to go and visit their doctor onsite. We just had Number 11 get employed yesterday on their own accord, went for the interview, secured it. She was super excited. She hasn't been employed in seven years, so this was a really big deal, and it's because she felt like she was dignified enough to go have that dialogue with someone who wanted to hire her. We also connected our second person through coordinated entry, and this person is somebody who historically has had a very hard time test, very hard time trusting services. It was through our mobile shower operator, Sean, who was really able to bridge the gap. The guy didn't have a phone, couldn't connect with the person who was on the other end of the housing piece. Sean is sitting there with him on the phone at the showers, connecting him to the case manager that has the housing, the housing stipend. So it's a very like community-driven, how can we not be in silos and work together operation. Of course, we've been in IJ, we were just there in the IJ yesterday. We had kids donate 2,500 socks, which was amazing. But of course, the one piece that we can't buy or sell or trade is the dignity, and that goes without mentioning. We've had people singing in showers, which has been pretty cool. We had one lady open half-robed and say, this is amazing, I feel beautiful. And then she looks at me, she's like, I know what beautiful is. I know I'm not beautiful, but I feel beautiful, and that's really cool. Now I feel like I can go on about my day. So it's these, these baby successes that are pretty powerful. Something else I wanted to mention, we had someone who was in her 60s, who had been living in her van for 10 years, and she comes to the showers. And she's one of those folks who had never touched any of the services in the community. She didn't know about them. She's got terrible knees, some other medical concerns that she didn't know how to take care of. She comes to the showers. She's there every day, really, really regular, connecting with us. She does the survey. After a few visits, she was really trepidatious. Earlier in September, she was housed. So she's now able to take care of her medical needs. She's no longer living in her van. But it is darling because she's got this little youth community that she would take care of. She was like the mother hen of all of the, the transitional aged youth, and so she still goes out and checks on her, on her kids, as she calls them, which is very endearing. So what, what's my goal? What's my goal with Marin Mobile Care? I know that there's a need out there. I know where we are. I see the impact we're making. We need to be in more locations. So I've been working really closely with other communities. We've been really working hard to get into Sausalito. But my goal is to at least be in the Twin Cities and Sausalito by the end of the year. So Larkspur, Cordera, and Sausalito. And then if we can wiggle in Fairfax, I'm down for that, too. But, because I'm an overachiever, but this is kind of the roadmap to where I'm going. Council meetings that I've been to, this is my calendar. I'm here with you guys tonight to talk to you about what this looks like for your community. Next week, we've had to do a ton of follow-up work with Sausalito, community meetings and things like that. So I'll be following up with them next week, and then I'll be in Fairfax in December. So that's kind of a snapshot, and, and that's in a nutshell. So that's-
And that's your former truck up there.
Yeah.
To add to point out, that's a-
Thanks for the fire department. It's been fantastic. We've only had to replace the batteries, which was easy breezy, but it's been incredibly stable. So thank you for that. Good point. Thank you.
Thought I'd just give a little props to Council.
Yeah. So.
I just wanted, before you ask questions, let you know that I've deferred a lot to my counterpart in Cordera, Todd Kuzumana, relying on his unique understanding of our homeless population from his time as police chief, and he's been working directly with the streets team to figure out exactly where they should do a pilot test of this program in our community.
Dan, does that include, since Central Marin PD is also San Anselmo, does that, although Todd's not in that role at this point, I think Chief Norton mentioned to me the other day that, that it seems the population is growing in San Anselmo as opposed to Larkspur and Cordera.
I might not be the right person to tell all the answers. One, we're not, Todd and I are only looking at our two communities. But I think Karen could probably speak to, there's some differences between our homeless population and the one in San Anselmo.
I haven't heard personally anything about the population growing, but I, my interest has peaked, and I will absolutely follow up because if anything, we need to be doing outreach more regularly to that community.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you for the incredibly helpful information.
Yeah.
And the, you're, if I might say so, a perfect messenger for this. Really-
Thank you.
-compelling. Thank you.
I have one quick question.
Other questions from council members? Vice Mayor Morrison?
Karen, I agree. You're perfect in this position. You're doing it. You guys, your whole team's doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
There is something that came up in the Marin IJ, not just your photo with all those bags of socks.
Those little kids.
It's, it was called the Roto, R-O-T-O clinic in San Rafael. It's free medical clinic, open at night. Did you know about that?
I've heard of the, yeah, it's like a dental clinic.
Is it, oh, it's dental?
Yeah, I think it's a dental clinic.
Ah, okay. I just, I never heard about it, and I got excited, and I thought, okay, I would ask you tonight.
Yeah, no, it's a dental clinic. And we, that's definitely been the next part, the next steps of what we're doing. So as bringing more services to the shower guests, some, one piece that was a challenge for us in the very beginning is that when folks are choosing to take showers early in the morning, it's posing a conflict, a time conflict or a choice conflict of either picking breakfast at Vinnie's or picking a shower. And that feels really unfair because both are basic needs. So we've had volunteers bringing bagged, bagged food, bagged lunches for folks at the showers. So even if they're not getting breakfast, they at least have something that they can go to after the showers are, after their time with us is done. Something else that we secured was pairing, you know, partnering up with the SPAR program. They do HIV and AIDS testing, and they're going to come onsite and do testing for folks that have been asking for that. So I'm looking forward to being able to serve the community in that aspect, too. I think that's really important. Yeah.
Other questions from council members? This is a presentation. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding this presentation? Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that council members would want to remove for further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would request a, a, item to be removed from the calendar.
Which item?
4.3.
All right. We'll remove item 4.3 for discussion. Are there other members of the public that would like to ask for items on our consent calendar to be considered for further discussion before we consider adoption of the balance of the consent calendar? I'm seeing, I'll consider a motion for the balance.
With that, with that modification, I'll move for approval of the consent calendar.
We have a motion for approval of the consent calendar except for item 4.3. Is there a second?
Second. Sorry, second, whatever.
Councilmember Waugh, seconds. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.3, we'll go to that item for further discussion. It's an ordinance 1026, consideration of waiving the second reading and adopting ordinance number 1026, adding chapter 8.1 Regulation of Massage Businesses to the Larkspur Municipal Code. Somehow I knew this would lead to item 4. Maybe we have a staff report, please.
I think the title of the agenda item is the staff report, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
It's second reading. You had an extensive conversation about this ordinance at your last meeting.
All right. Would the gentleman care to ask a question or make a comment regarding that item?
I would.
All right, would you please identify yourself for the record?
James Holmes, Larkspur. This ordinance could literally hit bottom in Larkspur if it allows buttocks massage. Paradoxically, the ordinance explicitly recognizes the buttocks as an erogenous zone by requiring it to be covered, and yet it permits that erogenous zone to be massaged. Allowing buttocks massage as long as the anus is not touched, as the ordinance currently does, is literally too close a call for effective and practical enforcement. I know of no substantiation for the proposition that buttocks massage is a standard practice or therapeutic, and I would urge the Council not to rely on such a non-intuitive proposition absent clear support for it. On the other hand, touching the buttocks is widely understood as a, just as either a gesture of sexual affection or as serious sexual harassment, pun unavoidable, depending on, on the circumstances. The bottom line is, if you will, is that butt massage is sexual stimulation. It create, allowing it in this ordinance creates a huge loophole that frustrates the purpose of the ordinance. That loophole can be closed very easily by inserting the word buttocks into the definition of body parts not to be touched, and I strongly urge the Council to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right. I'm going to close it and bring it back to the Council for discussion, consideration of the item. Would the Council care to discuss this item further? If not?
I think that this conversation came up before, and I think the city attorney defined the terms specifically came right from the state or, the state requirements. So I think we had this conversation about buttocks and their role in being massaged already. Thank you for, Sky, for reinforcing that last time. So I'm confident that we're being clear on this one.
Would you care to make a motion? Councilmember Chu.
Yeah, I think the second part of the city attorney's clarification was that if there was anything inappropriate or of a sexual nature, that it was already covered under other statutory, you know, other statutes that were in what criminal, whatever.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion for-
To pass four point three. Should I waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number ten twenty-six?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move now to the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm going to focus on housekeeping matters here and note again for the council and the public that you've canceled your next regularly scheduled meeting due to its proximity to Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving holiday. So that means there will not be a regular meeting on November 21st. You will be having your regular meeting on December 5th. That meeting will primarily focus on the passing of the gavel to the new mayor. And so the council has decided to have a special meeting on December 12th to conduct business during December, and then cancel the December 19th meeting, as it's been our experience, as we get that close to the winter break, it's a little more difficult to conduct the people's business and make sure that people get a chance to participate. So we will, to summarize, we will have a meeting on December 5th, primarily ceremonial, and we'll have a business meeting on December 12th. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Are there questions of the city manager on his report this evening from the council? Members of the public have questions of the city manager on his report this evening? Okay, we'll move forward. The next item on the agenda are council members' oral reports and comments. Vice Mayor Morrison, then councilmember Chu.
I just-
I think we all do.
And then we'll go, we'll move our way down.
I'll be quick here. I just want to promote the North Magnolia Reith Walk, which is happening this weekend. It's November the 10th from one to four. There you go. It's exciting. I also want to mention to everyone that Julian and his staff today put up a sign that says North Magnolia Business Center. It looks wonderful. So if you get a chance, go check that out. And we've also, Julian and his staff, put up reiths up on the lamppost. So it looks very festive in North Magnolia. So just thank you for that, Julian. And that's all I have to say.
Very good. Councilmember Chu?
Yeah, one of the things for people who have an interest in public safety topics, the Central Marin Police Authority and the Central Marin Fire Department or Authority, depending on whether you want to use the legal term, we have combined those meetings to be on the same night, back to back. And at this point, it's going to be February, May, August, and November. And it'll, currently, the police have already approved the second Thursday of the month, and then fire, I believe, still needs to approve that. So, you know, that's how we're handling now public safety.
That's great.
On, just a quick homeless-related topic, the last Central Marin Police Authority meeting did have a discussion where Chief Norton talked about the homeless outreach police program, HOPE, as they call it. And it's just the program that he has instituted back earlier this summer, where instead of sending people who are camping out illegally, that they try to match them up with assistance and social services. So that is all I have tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Way?
Following up on the public safety comments, Larry and I represent Larkspur on the Central Marin Fire Authority Council, which met last week. And I'm very pleased to say that our merger is going swimmingly well, and we should be finalized within a few weeks, I hope. Our next meeting is December 13th, so we will be meeting in advance before the end of the year. We also signed an agreement to share some services with Kentfield Fire Authority, or Fire District, with some battalion chiefs sharing, and they're starting to do some cross-training with each other, which I think is a very exciting opportunity for us to continue to look at sharing service arrangements. We also agreed to a contract with a Todd Lantos Company, which is Fire Wise Marin, if people are familiar with that, to really do some vegetation management outlines for us to help supplement what our staff already has done. And then lastly, the NRGs are up to thirty-four in Corder Madara and Larkspur, and the drill went pretty well over the change of the time on the weekend. We had a meeting on Monday morning to talk about lessons learned and things that needed to be enhanced. And pleased to say, we have two more neighborhoods going for their general meetings, informational meetings this weekend, including mine, finally. So my neighborhood finally is having their informational meeting to start their own NRG. So I think we're up to thirty-four now between the two cities, and we should be pleased that that's coming along really well. That's all for me.
Councilmember Harrah?
Yeah, just really briefly, just to follow up on our recent meeting where Vice Mayor Morrison and I were designated as members of an ad hoc committee to engage with the Community Facility Parcel Task Force, along with our city manager, Dan Schwartz. We've been having some good discussions with that group. I think we're all very pleased with the dynamic that they are representing and the progress that they're making in terms of organizational and related issues. So we're going to continue to have those discussions with them going forward into the future, and I'm very happy to be a part of that. On April, I'm sorry, not April, I'm skipping ahead, October 29th, I attended a meeting of the Marin County Representatives to, well, our local A-BAG Committee, Association of Bay Area Governments, where we're talking more about the next step in Plan Bay Area, which is amazing to me, because I don't know if I'll be around this long. It's Plan Bay Area 2050. So good luck to all of us. But it's time to start engaging in that discussion, and it's time for our local folks to be making sure that Marin County's interests are adequately represented in the discussion that will proceed with respect to Plan Bay Area. That's been controversial in the past. It will remain controversial. One of the things that I thought was interesting that came out of that meeting was a recognition that there may in fact be opportunities for Marin County, and any other county for that matter, to kind of focus on developing their own alternatives to the more regional plan in response to the concerns that many of us have about regional influences overtaking our ability to control the future of our community. So I'm sure we'll continue to have discussions along those lines in future meetings. And finally, I just wanted to mention, on November 1st, I attended, and Catherine, you attended also, an informational meeting of the Ross Valley Flood Control Program. This was an informational meeting that was cosponsored by the county and by the Army, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which is in the process of moving forward with proposals to manage flood control issues primarily in Ross. What the, what the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers calls is the Corte Madara Flood Control Project Units Two, Three, and Four, which is a typical federal designation for things that don't really mean necessarily a lot. More importantly, there is a joint environmental impact statement, environmental impact report that has been issued for the proposed core project. That's now been out there for a couple of weeks. There is going to be a public hearing at the Board of Supervisors on November 13th, which is coming up pretty quick. And the public comment period for submitting comments on the combined EIS/EIR will be up on November 27th. So if flood control is an issue that's of importance to you, and I think it should be important to all of us in our community, I would encourage you to at least consider taking the time to take a look at the document. It's quite lengthy. The main document itself is over 500 pages long. That does not include appendices. So it's kind of a bulky thing, but it's important, and it does have implications for our community since we're right downstream of where the project's going to be constructed. The, the, the project is not likely to be approved, and the EIR/EIS is not likely to be approved until September of next year. But because the public comment period ends this November, it's very important for those who have an interest in weighing in on flood control issues in our community to do so within the timeframe that's been allocated. That's it.
Thank you very much. I just have one short report. I attended the Smart Train Board Meeting as representing the Marin mayors and council members today. Two information points that I found interesting today. Smart will be serving its one millionth passenger this year in its first year of service. The most popular destination so far, this is without having the Larkspur extension in place to the ferry, is downtown San Rafael. The largest percentage of people going to San Rafael are on their way to the ferry. So I just want to point out that this is something we should probably start getting updates to the council regarding projections and what impacts we might start expecting because next year, it's expected for that extension to open. So just, I found that very, both very positive news and also informative. Thank you very much. So that's my report this evening. We'll move now to the rest of the agenda. We have no public hearings this evening. We have several business items. The first one is an update on Measure B, our paving program, which we're very proud of. May we have a staff report, please?
I think this might be a first. Trying to remember. Did you do the parking lot presentation?
I did, yeah.
Okay, so it's Alvin's second time being here. This is Alvin Tan, junior engineer from Department of Public Works.
Good evening, councilmember Hilmer, Mayor Hilmer, sorry. Councilmembers and members of the public. My name is Alvin Tan, and I am the engineer for, with the Public Works Department, and I will be providing a program update and forecast through 2019 for the Larkspur Measure So just a little background, Measure B is officially known as the Larkspur Street Repair and Essential Services Measure. In support of Measure B, a sales tax was adopted in November of 2017, and basically, this tax will allow the city to accelerate repairs on streets and potholes over a five-year Following the sales tax measure, city council adopted the Measure B paving plan on May 2nd, 2018. Staff worked with PEI, which is one of our consultants, to develop this paving plan. The development of the plan really consisted a lot of coordination with utility agencies and members of the public. We did evaluation of the existing pavement conditions. We assessed the requirements for curb ramps and accessibility upgrades along all these streets. And essentially, we basically prioritized each of these streets by year, and we kind of determined, you know, manageable project sizes with the goal of completing all the Measure B paving-funded roads by 2022. So the next slide is just basically a table that identifies the construction estimate for all of the Measure B-funded projects. So that's about $26 million. The projects that are highlighted in yellow are part of our fiscal year 1819 budget and includes the first year of paving, which is slated for 2019. And it also includes a citywide ADA curb ramp project, which are the accessibility upgrades, as well as an interim patch paving project. So the total cost of those three projects are, construction costs for those three projects are about 5.7 million. So the first project that's part of the fiscal year 1819 budget is the Group One paving, and that basically consists of about 6.8 miles of street paving in the Greenbrier Hills, Madrone Canyon, and the Loop Streets. So the, the, the work for these projects, the paving for these projects are less invasive. They include mostly overlays and shallow depth repairs, and there's very minimal concrete work. A lot of these streets, like in the Greenbrier Hills and kind of in the Loop area, don't have sidewalks. So that kind of eliminates the requirement to have to do accessibility upgrades and install curb ramps. These are kind of the reasons for why we chose these streets as part of the first year. With the lack of all this supplemental accessory work, we would be able to really kind of streamline the paving. And also, with a lot of the shallow depth improvements and just the simple overlays, we knew we weren't going to kind of run into a lot of issues with utility conflicts and things like that. So there wasn't as much planning and coordination involved with the first year of paving. So currently, we are working with PEI, so they've performed all the field testing and coring, and they are working on the final design for all the pavement. So as part of this first group of paving, we decided that we needed to kind of do a bit more extensive public outreach, especially with the scope of this first year of project. It's about four to five times the size of any of our previous paving projects. And also, obviously, this is the first year that we're really utilizing the Measure B money, and so we kind of wanted to make a really good impression to the public and, you know, kind of make them understand that, you know, we were really using the funds wisely and efficiently. So part of that was the public outreach letter that we sent to about 850 residents. The letter was pretty simple. It just kind of indicated that the resident street was going to be repaved. It also included information and encouraged the homeowner, basically, to undertake any type of trench restoration work or private improvements that they needed to do prior to us coming in and repaving the road, basically. And it also included some information from Ross Valley Sanitary District, which basically advertised a sewer lateral grant program, which is useful for homeowners because it's funds that RVSD allocates to the homeowners so that they can do their sewer lateral repairs. And then on October 1st, 2018, we held a really informal public workshop. This is pretty much an educational, kind of informal gathering, and it was really to educate the community, basically, on what the potential construction impacts would be for a project this scale. Also, what the different paving strategies were, how their pavement would look, and also reiterating the fact that any work that they needed to do that affected the pavement should be done, you know, prior to us coming in and paving the road. And a representative from RVSD was also there, so that was nice. They were able to kind of give, provide information on the grant program to a lot of these homeowners. And on October 23rd, 2018, we held a contractor workshop, and that was really just for our benefit for staff. And we basically wanted to pick the brain of a lot of these contractors so that we could most efficiently and cost-effectively bid out the projects. Some of the things that were discussed were kind of the best time to bid the projects, to get the lowest bids, how to best group the projects so that we could solicit the lower, the lowest bids, and also kind of how much detail had to go into the design. You know, obviously, we don't want to waste a lot of staff resources and time giving a lot of details when the contractor's not really going to need or use them, so. So this is basically a map of all of the streets that are part of the Measure B paving schedule. All the streets in green are going to be repaved in 2019. As you notice, some of the streets that are kind of towards the end of the schedule, sorry, of the Measure B program are located on Magnolia, the Baltimore Canyon, and southern Greenbrier area. So the reason for why a lot of these streets were towards the end of the project schedule was because they required much more kind of invasive rehabilitation. You know, we're going about probably eight to 10 feet deep in a lot of these streets, and so there's always that risk of conflict with utilities. And so, you know, it's important for us to kind of do the planning and the design ahead of time with these utility agencies so that we don't run into these issues while we're actually doing the construction. So also, a lot of these streets had accessible routes, and so there's a lot of curb ramp work, and, you know, we're trying to consolidate all that curb ramp work- you know, we're trying to consolidate all that curb ramp work ahead of time, do that first, so that we don't have to do that as part of the paving projects, and we can really just do the paving efficiently and just, you know, run the project smoothly. So... And also, a lot of these streets did have, not a lot, but some of these streets did have some planned utility work, and so we wanted the utility agency, the utility agencies to be able to get in there and basically do all their work, tear up the road before we came in and, you know, fix the road. So... So the funding for the Group One streets is basically from three sources. The majority is from Measure B, and that's specifically allocated just to construction. And we've got another 620,000 from vehicle impact fees and gas taxes that are specifically allocated to the design and construction support. So the second project that's part of the 1819 fiscal year budget are the accessibility improvements. So basically, ADA curb ramps are required to be installed along all accessible routes, along all the streets that are, that we're going to repave. So what we wanted to do is basically group all the curb ramps into a single project. So that's about like 200 curb ramps throughout the city, and do all the work ahead of time so that we didn't have to do them, you know, with the paving project. So one, it's kind of a twofold benefit. One, we would save money because of the large scope of the project and the similar type of work. And two, you know, again, we wouldn't run into delays while we're actually doing the paving, and we're getting that stuff all out of the way before we have to do the actual paving. So right now, we are working with a CASP consultant. We had a field visit last week, and we are about to embark on the design. So funding is from, for the accessible improvement project is from two sources. The first is the majority being Measure B. Again, that's just for construction. And then also about, I think, 250K from vehicle impact fees that are towards, that go towards the design and So the final project that's part of the 1819 budget is the patch paving project. And so that's basically the city utilizing about 450 tons of HMA to perform skin patching in local areas of failure on all the streets that are not part of the paving project in 2019, which is the Group One project. The, this project is basically intended to provide interim improvements for the streets that will be repaved in the following years or towards the end of the Measure B program. It's going to get the streets through a few more winters as well. And also, this is really going to greatly reduce our staff maintenance time so that they don't have to go out there every single winter and re-patch all the potholes because it's just really time and money intensive. So... So we, so council approved the contract with Major and Gelati tonight, actually. So that's, that's a good thing. And we are hoping to start the construction next Wednesday. So funding, again, majority is for Measure B, and it's allocated towards just the construction and about 15,000 vehicle impact fees that are for design and construction support. There's additional $41,250 that council approved so that we could award the full scope of the project and get all that skin patching done. So what are the next steps? For the Group One project, again, right now, we're in design, and we hope to go to council on the first meeting in February to accept the plans and authorize the bid. We'll bid the project for about a month, hopefully award in March, and then start construction mid-April to May, and hopefully be completed by August. Meanwhile, while the Group One projects are under construction, we're also going to start the design on the Group Two projects, which is slated for summer of 2020. For the ADA ramp project, we're about to start the design phase. Hopefully, we will be able to get the project out to bid in the winter of 2019. And you can, as you can probably tell, the, we're giving a little bit of flexibility to kind of the time constraints for the ramp construction. And again, that's because we want to give as much flexibility to contractors to be able to kind of best utilize their crew members and their staff so we can get a really low bid and good price for, for the curb ramp installation. And really, the only constraint is that we need to construct all the curb ramps and have them installed before the Year Two project, which is in summer of 2020. And that's the first year of projects that will require, that have all the accessible paths that need to be upgraded and all the curb ramps that need to be installed. So... And then the patch paving project will start construction next Wednesday, and hopefully we will be complete by the end of winter. So that is all, and if you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you very much, Alvin. Are there questions of staff from the council on this presentation?
No questions to comment, though.
Councilmember Harrow?
Thank you for that presentation. It's great to keep getting these updates on your progress and what's anticipated, particularly for the Group One paving projects. I'm particularly interested in that because that's where I live, and so I'll be expecting conquer, expecting asphalt to be spread around my street beginning in the second quarter of next year.
Watch what you ask for.
And I also appreciate the outreach that you've been doing. I hope it's been successful. I know some folks are more aware of what's going on, particularly with respect to replacement of their sewer laterals. I had a neighbor already replace one of their, replace their lateral right next door to my house. I know other neighbors are aware of that. I don't know that we're quite at a critical point where all those arrangements have to be made, but it's not just a one-step process. You have to have your lateral inspected. You have to come out and they'll, they'll provide you with a bid or a proposal to do the work. And they have to schedule the work. And it's a couple-day project, and it's not, it's not inexpensive. So I'm kind of thinking about how I can reach out to my neighbors to kind of bring the group together to maybe share some costs.
Yeah, it's definitely, you know, I think it's more cost-effective if you do that because we've had neighbors in the past in North Almanar, you know, kind of consolidate all their work so that one contractor could just kind of be there and hit up all the spots, and it's just cheaper for the homeowners that way.
Yeah, I think my neighbor, I think the contractor who did my neighbor's work was doing it more for marketing than anything else. So, and he did, they did a good job. So I'm sure that they'll, will give some consideration to using them. But I guess the point is, we're going to be hitting the holidays pretty soon and then into the first of the year, and it's really important for folks who do need to have their laterals replaced, and I'm one of those folks, that, you know, you get it done before the asphalt trucks come out.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Way?
I had a question about the Madrone Canyon and the more, not superficial, but moderate overlay. Are there issues that we need to take into account regarding tree roots? Because Madrone is an unusual road configuration where there are trees growing in the middle, in the, in the road. And do, do we have arborists assess that, or how do we decide whether roots have to come out or not?
Yeah, we always have it every year in the contract specifications. Basically, we have an arborist that the city hires and contracts with to kind of assess each of these situations on a case-by-case basis, case-by-case basis. You know, we can't really just arbitrarily just chop the roots because that's going to really be a detriment to the health of some of these trees and can cause the trees, obviously, to collapse. And so there's a lot of different strategies to kind of be able to navigate around these issues. Sometimes, you know, the arborist might recommend just shaving the roots down or putting in root barriers and things like that so these issues aren't persistent, and then we can kind of do the work and it's not going to uplift the pavement again. So it really just depends.
Okay. And maybe this is a question for staff. Have Measure B committee met yet? The Oversight Committee?
They met to make a budget recommendation to you.
Okay.
They haven't met since.
All right.
Other councilmember questions or comments on the presentation and update this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Alvin. And thanks to our partners from Ross Valley Sanitary District that are here this evening. Your cooperation and help on this makes, makes a lot, means a lot to us. Thank you. All right, we'll move on with this evening's agenda, which is, next item is establishing a citywide banner program.
Do you want to take any public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment?
Don't go yet.
Are there members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on Alvin's fantastic presentation?
I got a little excited.
That's all right. So did I. All right.
Yes, thank you very much, Alvin. Cindy Winter-Greenbrier. These curb ramp cutouts were designed mainly for ADA, I believe, but they're also a wonderful convenience for cyclists. And I wondered if you could publish a list of the items, the curb ramps that you're planning to repair, or new ones that you're going to put in, and then we could pass it around. And I don't expect a lot of corrections or suggestions to it, but I think it would be a reasonable thing to do.
Yeah, we can definitely reach out to you. You know, a lot of it is also just assessing kind of the accessible route as well. So the goal being that we may not put a curb ramp on every single corner, but, you know, just define one side of the road maybe as the accessible route and putting curb ramps there. So...
Well, if anybody, if any cyclist has some questions, then we can pass them by you.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
James Holmes-Larkspur, I'm on the Measure B committee. I'm not speaking with respect to that committee. But in terms of the design and the extent of detail in the design, I would stress the importance of making it clear that the design, that, that the design has to be clean and not sloppy, and that there needs to be a clear and smooth line between the gutter and the pavement. We did have an issue with that in terms of the last phase of the Madrone Canyon paving, and I, I would hate to see the next phase of Madrone Canyon paving have the same level of, shall we say, in some places, imprecision that I saw between Madrone, I saw between Olive and, Olive and Orange. So I do think that design specifications have to be very clear that it, it needs to be a real, clean, neat edge such that you'd want it to be creditable and attractive rather than slopping over onto the gutter or, or other imprecision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this item? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to the next item, which is 8.2, establishing a citywide banner program. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor Hilmer, members of the City Council. My name is Shannon O'Hara, and I'm the Assistant to the City Manager. So tonight, staff is bringing for your consideration a policy to establish a citywide banner slash sign program. A street banner program is a great means of creating community identity within our city, as well as publicizing local events, activities, and public information throughout the city. Larkspur and similar entities serving Larkspur residents would benefit from the ability to display information on banners throughout town. To achieve this end, staff has identified three areas in the city that would be suitable for displaying these banners and signs. And the primary criteria for choosing the locations that staff could place these would be that they would, A, accommodate poles needed for attaching banners or signs, B, provide sufficient visibility and prominence for the banners and signs so people could actually see them, and that they would not create a safety hazard or significantly distract from the visual character of the area. So staff worked on three areas that you see here. The first is at Lucky and Doherty. So there's kind of the large view of the area. And here's a closer view of what it would look like at the street level. The second is at Doherty and Magnolia, also a street level view. And the final one is at Arch and Magnolia. And there's a street level view. And as we discussed, if you have any questions, we can go back and look at these. So staff proposes that the council adopt the policy that reserves these locations for displaying banners for the city of Larkspur, the city as an entity, local government agencies servicing Larkspur, and our community partners, and charitable nonprofit organization that benefit Larkspur and its residents. The attached resolution would adopt policy to this effect. It's a fairly straightforward policy. Other components of the policy just set time limitations and other specifications, and qualifying entities may use these locations without charge. They completed an application. This is the conclusion of the verbal staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions or begin the discussion about this.
Questions for Shannon from councilmembers? Councilmember Chu?
I'm not trying to be over-specific, but I know that there have been times when people have kind of had a disagreement as to whether they were community-serving or however the language is. Will there, are you going to decide these based upon, say, for example, a specific formal registration with, as a nonprofit, or will you make a determination based upon their stated mission or function?
I think we'd focus on the latter. I think it'd be difficult to require every, it wasn't our intent to say you had to be a 501(c)(3) type of entity. There's a lot of, let's call them mom and pop, nonprofit activity that I think we would qualify that are community-serving.
Yeah, and that's where I was kind of going with it because, like, for example, we just had the neighborhood response groups.
That's a great example.
This weekend. And, you know, they had sandwich boards all over the community, and it was for, you know, a community benefit. I think that probably the one thing we can agree on is not political.
That's right. It's not intent.
Okay, I'm fine. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
I don't have any.
Councilmember Way?
Yes. Hi, Shannon. Hi, Shannon. Thanks for this. The only thing that came, sort of jumped out at me was three that are all in the sort of historic downtown area. Had you considered, or had staff considered, the Greenbrier, the East Greenbrier, the Larkspur Landing area, which are also part of our city, and also the North Magnolia area?
Yeah, that's a great point. So staff looked at all available locations in the city limits that would kind of meet the safety, visibility.
Right.
Criteria. And these are the locations that meet all of those criterias. Now, there are, this is a policy for just what the, there's city property that can accommodate signs. This is by no means a decree that this is the only place you can put signs in the community. If there's private space that meets our sign ordinance or other criteria, folks are free to put up signs there if they can make those accommodations with the private property holders. So at Larkspur Landing, there are banners for events that happen at Marin Country Mart. The Bon Air Center, from time to time, has accommodated community groups or other signage on their properties. So this is just for, for a city property and what we can...
And we don't have city property in those areas that met any of our criteria?
You have to remember, we don't own property along Sir Francis Drake.
Oh, right.
On the west side of the freeway. It's on the county.
Right.
So there aren't actually a lot of locations like this in that part of town that are owned by the city. That's, I think, why a lot of entities approach the shopping center.
That makes sense. Thanks for explaining that.
Yeah, good point.
And I, and I guess the East Greenbrier area is sort of borders Corte Madera so closely. They already have a banner poles there. Yeah, now that I think about it, they have some right, almost right on the borderline there. So there are opportunities for, I noticed the Friends Library, for Larkspur Library, has been utilizing those banner poles all over. So I guess there should be, there could be some cross-pollination if, if groups plan it out in advance. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Harrow?
I just noticed a typo in the resolution. The second, be it resolved, first, be it further resolved, the last word, poles is spelled P-O-L-L-S. Should be different.
Noted.
Unless you were thinking of what happened yesterday.
You know, I think what happened actually is both of the be it resolves picked up language from our old banner pole policy because we were kind of using that to make this one. So the references in all cases should be to the use of the city's banner, designated banner locations. We should change it to say that.
Yep.
Well, I'm glad I found that.
So thank you for catching that.
Other councilmember questions? Are there council member questions? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this agenda item? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Doug Kelly. I served on the San Anselmo Town Council. I'm just a little concerned. I didn't read the full ordinance, so I'm a little in the dark. But we on the San Anselmo Town Council were very careful to create our banner ordinance in conjunction with our sign ordinance, which was very clear on what we were allowing. We had a class that we allowed. Yours, and again, I haven't seen it, so I would just suggest you be careful. Because, for example, the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers, which I'm a member, were a 501(c)(3). Can I have a banner that says, "I don't support one of the members of the town council"? Right. So, you know, we were very careful about the law and the classes, and I'm just suggesting, we went through a long process to do that. And I just wanted to be, advise you that that took us some time and we're happy with it, and I just hope that you do the same, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and consideration of the policy. Councilmember Chu.
I guess to a former council member Kelly's comments, it is still, we have listed here that it's still the discretion of city managers. Is that correct? Would you be able to reconcile that?
Yeah, so I've, I've worked with these types of lists and other locations, and the challenge is you almost invariably leave something off the list. So at the risk of getting myself in trouble, this policy's written to let me make the decision. And then someone could always appeal my decision to you if they think I'm saying they can't use our locations and they should be able to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that makes me feel comfortable. And Dan, there's a time limit, correct?
So I think, Shannon, remind me, it's one week. It's one week and they can reserve a second week.
And they need to put it up and they need to take it down and not the guy. Okay, great.
Councilmember Way?
I don't have any.
Councilmember Harrah?
I'm ready to make a motion.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion and pass Resolution 8313, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Larksborough adopting a policy for the use of the city's equipment for displaying banners at designated locations in Larksborough with the changes that our city manager mentioned earlier.
Could I have a second to that motion?
We have a motion and we have a second.
Oh, is it, oh, 83, it's Resolution 8318.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda this evening is another business item, item 8.3, consideration of whether to withdraw as a member agency of the Central Marin Sanitation Agency. May we have a staff report, please?
I first have to say, I almost wish I hadn't put this on the agenda only because we almost got through a meeting where not a single department head nor the city manager made a presentation. I think that's pretty cool.
Great job.
Okay, so consideration of whether to withdraw as a member of the Central Marin Sanitation Agency. As the council will recall, in May of last year, May of 2017, you reviewed a report from the Local Agency Formation Commission that was looking at the way wastewater collection and treatment is done in the central Marin area. And you were specifically asked by LAFCO to respond to one of the recommendations or one of the comments, which was effectively that the Central Marin Sanitation Agency, which you're a member of, should work eventually for you to leave the agency because you no longer collect wastewater service. And at that time, when you did the review in May of that year, you concluded the item by proposing to send a letter to LAFCO that said, "We kind of need to know what the world looks like if we leave CMSA before we make the decision. So we'd like to see CMSA talk about this and say what would happen if we left." We sort of, I think, got into a cycle because CMSA, I don't think, was able to come to a conclusion. The mayor can speak to that more directly. He's your representative on CMSA about that particular topic. And so we've kind of been in a holding pattern. Most recently, though, another issue came into play. I warned the council that we were monitoring a bill passing through the Assembly, AB 1912, which had to do with pension liabilities and joint powers authorities. Now, our primary interest in that bill was our fire authority, but at the same time, I had warned you that staff would start to look at our membership in every joint powers authority relative to whatever language the legislature chose to enact because in its earliest iterations, the bill was quite onerous and raised questions about whether any city really would want to remain in a joint powers authority that was a CalPERS employer. Fortunately, cooler heads prevailed and the legislation that ultimately passed was significantly less aggressive than those early iterations that we had flagged for you. In this final iteration, the exposure's not immediate. It's really designed as a bill to trigger provisions if an entity was going to terminate or dissolve or members were going to leave, and then the pension liability needs to be distributed. And admittedly, because you don't have a fiduciary interest right now in CMSA, it's a pretty strong argument. You don't have a financial obligation with respect to these pension obligations. But there is the potential still for that to be imposed upon you. That's not actually 100% eliminated by the way this bill was crafted. So that sort of raises a small red flag for staff that we wanted to make you aware of, and we felt that merited your discussion with us this evening and thought it should be discussed also in the context of the LAFCO recommendation from last year. And staff is suggesting that either we should initiate a process to leave CMSA, as LAFCO had suggested, or alternatively, we should ask CMSA to pass something, pass a resolution of some sort to stipulate that we don't have any future obligation with respect to the agency's pension obligations. So those are sort of the two choices that staff's suggesting to you. I made sure that CMSA General Manager, Jason Dow, was aware of what's going on. I know he's present. I think there's some members of his board present as well. Turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Before I take council member questions, who would be the best person to describe the new in national pollution discharge elimination system permitting requirements? Given CMSA's, Jason, you may be the best one for this. Given recent permitting discussions with permitting authorities, how the collection agencies are being, sharing in the, yes, please? The new permitting environment, given, given the recent reviews?
Hey, good evening. Great to be here. Yeah, so we have a new MPS permit. And as part of the permitting process, the Regional Water Board concluded that they're going to add CMSA's, what we call satellite collection agencies, as members of the permit. So they're jointly listed on the permit with us and they have a set of compliance requirements over the next five years for them to, for them to achieve in terms of certain projects from design work, construction work, lateral grant programs, things of that nature.
And how would, how would those changes impact Larksborough if we were to remain a member of CMSA? Do you see any impact at all?
Yeah, Larksborough's not listed in the MPS permit. So there's no obligations for Larksborough from the regulatory perspective.
Okay, so that was one thing we were, we were watching relative to that. And Dan identified the real issues for us to consider tonight. I just wanted to make sure that we flagged that. I'll get more information on any of these things. Thank you, Jason. We have friends from the Central Marin Sanitation Agency Board and Ross Valley Sanitary District here this evening. Tom, or Michael, or Doug, would you like to add anything to the staff report? Up to you. Let me think about it. I'll give you a chance.
The only thing I'd like to add is that the JPA was completely rewritten.
This is Tom Gaffney.
Oh, I'm, excuse me, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm very happy to be here. My name is Tom Gaffney and I'm the board president for this year of the Ross Valley Sanitary District. The JPA was completely rewritten last year, as you'll probably remember. And you did sign the JPA as the city of Larksborough. And it, the point of the rework was to clean up a document that was written about 1984. And so it had been in operation for all over 30 years, and it worked pretty well. And so one of the issues of that was that we were going to make a review of the governing board as requested by LAFCO and is, I think there was another agency that made a report. So the grand jury also said the same thing, that you should consider reviewing the governing board. And CMSA did not make a recommendation. I know that you said, gee, what would be the board, what would the board be like? You wrote a letter to LAFCO saying, "We'd like to see it." I can tell you that if Larksborough withdrew, it would be a five-member board. Our district would have two, and of course, you're represented as part of our district. We would have two of the five votes. San Rafael Sand would have two. And Corte Madera Sanitary District Number Two would have one vote. So there'd be five votes, just like a city council. And I think that's, I don't really have anything else to add. CMSA did not make a recommendation on what to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just to be clear, this has nothing to do with our fine working relationship. This has to do with, with the sustainability of the liability situation. So we're...
Mr. Mayor, I didn't understand the question. What is it?
No, I was not asking a question. I was just saying, our consideration of this agenda item tonight has nothing to do with our fine working relationship. It has to do with considerations regarding the liability.
I was really interested in the paving proposal because we, our staff has told us that working with Larksborough and San Anselmo, both towns have been really good about coordinating their paving with our, our lateral program. And we give grants because it's a great time to do it just before the paving.
Well, we value that and we continue that. Questions from council members? Councilmember Way?
Sure, I'd like to direct this to you since, or maybe staff, since you're a representative. There is no financial relationship that we have with CMSA at this point. And it seems as if we would just not be a voting member anymore and we would release our, our potential liability issues. What's the benefit of staying?
Well, the city has, since the day the CMSA formed, has been a participant in its, its policy directions and other board activities.
Oh, okay.
To the extent that you enjoy that representation on the board, if the chair's statement's correct, because I don't know what, the JPA's, to me, is silent on what will happen if Larksborough leaves, if it would be a five-member board or there'd be a discussion about this sixth seat. I don't know that it speaks to that. But if he's correct, then you might submit that then the population of Larksborough would only have a resident on the board of CMSA when and if an RVSD board member who lives in Larksborough were on CMSA. So to the extent that that is important to you, then that's, that's the issue.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
Dan, it looks like we wrote a letter in 2017.
We did.
We wrote a letter in 2017 asking about the same, the same question we're here tonight. And we never got a response?
Well, I think the letter was to fulfill our obligation to respond to the LAFCO study and sort of left open the point that the council would take a position when CMSA decided what would happen if Larksborough were to leave. But those chain of events were never necessarily triggered, so.
So we still don't have any?
We're bringing you this item now because this other intervening variables has come along, this issue of the AB 1912.
Okay.
Councilmember Chu?
You had mentioned the potential for, you know, pension and benefit liabilities. By staying in, are there any other potential liabilities that could be, that Larksborough could incur as a result of an action against the CMSA?
No, there shouldn't be because the, the member agencies are insulated from lawsuits against the CMSA for its own operations. So you shouldn't really be exposed to anything else.
So it's, it's really the worst-case scenario where if the CMSA dissolves, then whatever distribution or how they parcel out, you know, to the individual members, any remaining liabilities, would Larksborough be included in that?
As of today, yes. But also, this whole issue around the pension liability speaks to the fact that state law or federal law could change at any time and the implications for you may change. So I guess, I guess in that context, I would say, the AB 1912 point, even though it ended up that the way the law was written, the potential for a problem is pretty low. It reminds us that the law is dynamic and there's always the possibility that any agency you belong to, you might be exposed to something at some point. And in this case, you belong to an agency that you don't actually have a direct operational relationship with.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Harrah?
Just a procedural question. Is this, this is an action item or just discussion? Or do we need a resolution?
You're giving me direction. And I think some vote for direction would be the most appropriate for this particular item. And then we probably need to clarify with CMSA, based on whichever direction you give, what our next, our formal action should look like.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any Dan to step down?
Either that or get some clarification that we're not ever going to be subject to the pension obligation.
So we're still waiting for answers from the Central Marin?
I don't think that...
Well, I think you just had the chair. The chair tells you he believes that our seat would just dissolve, and I have no reason to doubt him. I think that's silent on that. I think that's a logical way it would play out.
Okay.
All right.
And maybe you want to clarify. I don't, I may be wrong.
I'd like a clarification. I would.
Any other council member questions? All right, are there members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this item? Please, step forward, identify yourself for the record.
Hi, Doug Kelly. I serve as a board member of CMSA. I'm not certain, but I believe the president of the Ross Valley Sanitary Board was some, to some extent, speculating. But I can tell you that over the years, the Ross Valley Sanitary District has had some challenges, its board getting along with others and playing nice. It's been very important to the board, as it is now configured over the last few years, completely new, to play nice with our neighbors and our friends. As a member of the CMSA Board of Directors, I wouldn't support any change that would irritate our colleagues on Corte Madera and San Rafael. And so I would not be inclined to support anything except if Larksborough was to withdraw, that it remain two members of San Rafael, one member of Corte Madera, and two members of Ross Valley Sanitary District Board. I think anything else would irritate our colleagues and poorly serve our community.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this item? Sure. Looks like we're going to get a majority speaking.
The procedure that was discussed at Central Marin, it wasn't voted on or anything, would be that Larksborough, if you decided to leave the board, would resign from the board. We'd pass a resolution and the, I think every, then all the members would have to sign. sign an amendment to the JPA. And that's what would happen. If anybody proposed that somebody gets the sixth seat, I don't think that would fly. It has to be unanimously approved. And in fact, that was seriously discussed in 1993, when you did an X to the board. There was a lot of discussion, should Ross Valley get the third seat, or should Larkspur retain its seat? And that's actually what was decided, was that nobody wanted to give Ross Valley, you know, 50% vote on that board. And so it was decided that Larkspur would keep its seat. But if Larkspur withdrew, and just that method, which was discussed at Central Marin, then it would be a five-member board. That's why I mentioned that.
Councilmember Harof?
Just a quick clarifying question. If we withdraw, that's not a debate in which we would have any role or participation. That's up to you, right?
If you withdraw, then you wouldn't have any participation on the board.
That's right. Or in the discussion about how your board is going to be comprised after we leave.
Except through Ross Valley Sanitary District. You're, you know, one of our key areas that we serve, and you elect board members.
Sure, but in a specific discussion about how your board is organized, that's not...
Oh, no. The Ross Valley Board?
Yeah.
No.
We'd be done.
You'd take the role, just like Fairfax, San Anselmo, and Ross, they really, they vote for our electors, but they don't participate at Central Marin.
Other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this item?
I dress for a warm day. I'm Michael Borstein. I'm on the RVSD Board of Directors and the Central Marin Commissioner there with Mr. You said, one of the points that you made was that if you were to withdraw, that just Larkspur would no longer have representation. And the Ross Valley Board absolutely represents Fairfax, San Anselmo, Ross, Greenbree, Kent Woodlands, everywhere, including Larkspur. I wasn't elected to represent Kenfield. So we represent, you know, we represent all the districts within the Ross Valley, I would say, equally. So you absolutely have representation regardless, through the Ross Valley Sanitary District. And I believe that since the dark era, that the Ross Valley has been working very closely with our sister, with our agencies that we're involved with. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. I believe earlier, it was stipulated that it was a member of the Larkspur City Council. Am I correct?
A resident. You're supposed to appoint a resident. It doesn't, you at times have not always...
Oh, we have. That's right, because Kathy Hartzell wasn't.
Right.
Right. Well, thank you for that clarification, Michael. Appreciate it. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this item? I will bring it back to the city council for discussion. I find the issue here to be one of consideration of the liability issues. If those don't rise to the level where we need to make a change, I value the working relationship that we have, and I think that we've provided benefit to the discussions. I haven't heard anything otherwise. I have heard no comment from CMSA board members that they would, anyone would like Larkspur to withdraw. But I think it's our duty to minimize risk, and if in a risk analysis, this is something we should change, I believe we should act along those lines on the liability issue.
I'm leaving the CMSA.
Yes, yes. That's my recommendation. Follow the staff recommendation. Councilmember Harof.
I just want to chime in on those comments, and I do worry about the liability issues. We've seen that the legislative approach to the CalPERS issues go in all kinds of different directions over the last year, which has been frightening, and it creates a sense of unpredictability that I think the staff report has highlighted. So I think in order to avoid the concern about those kind of legislative risks, I think it's actually important for us to withdraw.
Councilmember Wei.
This has been a couple of years in the works, and I think we have enough of the information that we need. While I appreciate Doug Kelly's comments about working together cooperatively, we do all serve at the will of the public, and we are only here for a certain amount of time, and there's no balance, there's no knowledge about what the next board or configuration may do. So I think it's important, as Mary Homa brought up, to continue to protect Larkspur's interests. We haven't used this service since 1993, although we do and are involved in keeping track of policy-making decisions. I'm not really sure why we should remain if we're not involved in using the services at all, and that just puts us at higher risk, so I like...
Well, just to clarify, we are a customer, so we do use the services.
So that part's unclear to me. Why 1993, then, we moved our wastewater collection to...
Dan can explain.
Well, you're both right.
Okay.
So the mayor's saying that everyone who lives in all of Central Marin's territory is a customer.
Right.
Because you indirectly pay for CMSA through your bill to your waste collection provider. So in your case, you pay Ross Valley Sanitary District, and a piece of that moves on to CMSA. So the mayor's right about that. But Councilmember Wei is correct, that the City of Larkspur is no longer a fiduciary member of CMSA.
Okay. So that's clear.
We don't contribute to their administrative budget. We don't pass through any fees that we collect to their budget. We're entirely present on a policy level.
So since 1993, that's gone on?
That's because in 1993, territory south of the creek that used to have its wastewater collected by the city annexed into Ross Valley Sanitary District for that service.
Got it. So I'll support your position on that, too.
And I will, too.
Councilmember Chu.
Yeah, I support Steph's position. Don't want to wait until the state legislature makes that decision for us. They're not going to stop at 1912. Already regrouping on that.
So Dan, when will this letter go out?
Well, I'm hearing what appears to be unanimous direction, so I will now consult with Jason Dow as to specifically what the agency would like to receive from us, and then at your next agenda, we'll have that as a consent item for you to formalize and send on.
All right.
Is that, is that direction?
That's sufficient. I kind of heard enough, five votes, to think I have it.
All right.
Any further discussion from the council on this item? Any further discussion by members of the public on this item? Thank you very much. I'm sure we'll commemorate this in some reasonable manner, so that we all recognize the goodwill that was present here. All right. Thank you very much. That concludes the business items this evening. I understand we're adjourning in memory of Noel Schumway this evening, long-serving member of the community and valued board member to our library board.
I'll second that.
So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Noel Schumway.
And I'll second that.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for attending the decision. It's 8:15.